For storage and it's just like not really what we want. We want everything in one spot in the shed put away nice. I mean, I'm super OCD about the whole lawn and I want the whole lawn to be landscaped eventually, but I just can't do it right now without a shed and I didn't want to invest the money in a ten by ten shed just to grow out of it before we even buy. So I just thought it would be best to go forward. Go through all the steps of hopefully getting variances and taking all the precautions and getting everything set before jumping onto any shed because I wanted to know the variance that you guys would hopefully grant me as well as the size so I don't shop for a shed and then just like that's the one I really want. It's a twelve by sixteen. It's uh yeah, it's right down the road on two fifty. That's the one I really want. I mean, it's kind of pricey, but for what we're gonna get the use out of it, it's gonna be worth our while. We're not gonna grow out of it ever. I'll have my little, all my tools back there and stuff so if I have to do a little like housework or something, I can go back there, figure out when I gotta cut, if I make cuts or whatever and go back from the house since I'm losing the garage. So I have nowhere to go after the garage is renovated. It's gonna all be house, no storage. Alright.
What I will do is I will let the members of the board ask you some questions here. They're clarifying questions, questions pertaining to your project.
So you're asking for a one foot variance for the rear property line?
Uh, it's going to convert eight foot variance.
Uh, eight foot variance, correct. Well, right. So it'd be two feet from the property line?
So it's gonna be two feet from the side and two feet from the rear?
From the rear, I'm not exactly sure because the yard kind of tapers down. So it's gonna be more than two feet from the rear because in order for it to be in the most leveled spot, it would be like, honestly, I'm not exactly sure because the boundary of the fence in the backyard is like, there's a gap from where the fence in my actual property line is, it's like two and a half or three feet or something like that. So I technically don't own any of that yard in my backyard. So it would be farther forward, like I said, it would probably be like two or between two and five feet from our line.
So Will, then he needs two?
Does he need a rear setback? That's what I was just...
Yeah.
I would say, yeah. Because otherwise, if you don't get it, if you don't get it set back for the back, that means that thing's ten feet off the property line.
Yeah, which would basically, but like, kind of right where...
I just want you to understand what it means if you don't get both.
Yeah, I was hoping for both.
Alright.
It probably won't be...
Sounds like the back is gonna become somewhat variable on the level area of the...
At the property line.
Right.
Yeah, so it won't be more than two feet, that's for sure. If anything, it's gonna be like probably four feet from the property line, give or take. I'm not exactly sure on the exact measurements, like I said, because my whole backyard is at like a twenty degree pitch all towards the house, but there are spots that are more level than others. So I want it for the last, long term, I want it settled and it will be on skitters. So if anything were necessary, we could always move it. It's not set in this place under the skitters.
Okay, I have a question. I probably have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, so gonna be electricity in this?
No.
Okay, that answers one. The exterior coloring of it, while it's kind of outside of the purview of this board, I'm gonna ask it anyhow. What's it gonna be painted and what's the exterior surface gonna look like?
It'll be vinyl, like siding.
Okay.
Um, we're leaning towards gray, but we may go towards like the color of the house a little bit more, which is more tan. Um, I like the gray one that we saw. I just don't know if it would pair with the house or like create a contrast too much because she like, she's really an interior designer and stuff. So that very, is very variable. It's gonna be a wood shed, but it will be vinyl on the outside, like normal siding on a house. So that's a, that answers the question.
Pretty low maintenance.
I'm hoping so.
So when the zoning rule says it's similar size and similar siding and roofing, it doesn't necessarily mean the color?
Hmm, see, I think that's open to discussion. I think it does.
It's on page uh...
No, I know where it is. I'm looking for something else.
So there is, in that variance that you're addressing here, there is some language that says that the quote, detached, the exterior of a detached garage or building shall be finished with similar siding and roofing as the siding and roofing of the principal building.
Correct.
So that may answer your question about how it's colored, unless you wanna change the house at the same time.
Uh, not at the same time. That adds, that could go down the line, but...
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, it'd be very similar. Like I said, the contrast, she wouldn't want the contrast. So it would be extremely similar because that siding is really old and I actually went to go look for siding. They don't have that exact color. They have similar ones like, but they have the newer models and everything. So it would be very similar, yes.
So my question that I have for you is that there's a easement with R G E on that corner there because of the way the power line runs there.
Correct.
And so that, I think, Mr. Barham, maybe you can address that, what he's responsible for in that regard? The power line, is he responsible, I mean, if he's aware that there's a power line has an easement with R G E, right? So they need room to do work is what I'm...
Do the lines run along the back, the back or the side or both?
Uh, they run along the side.
Okay.
So it's like in the back corner. It's like, it's on, it's probably from where the shed is, where we placed the shed, it'd probably be eight and a half feet maybe, if you ever take a brush, please?
But the poles run along the side, not the back?
Yeah, they run along, they run from the corner to, now you're making me think, I haven't been back there in a while. Yeah, they run along the side where the pine trees are. So yeah, they run along the side.
Okay, so what Larry is saying is that R G E has an easement there. So anything within that easement, they have the right to, you know, trim their, trim trees or do whatever they have to do to work on their lines. Anything that's within that easement, they also have the right to move out of the way. They notify you first anyways, but if it's, if it's in their way and it's in within their easement, they have the right to move it out of the way at no detriment to them. So if somebody puts a fence in there or something else that has to be removed, they can legally remove it, but they would normally let you know ahead of time and give you an opportunity to give them room to work, just so...
So I only bring that as a point of information to you. And then the other point, given that I gave you that point of information, my question would be, would you consider going to the other side of your lot? And I know that there is a bit of an angle on the back here from this drawing that you have. What I'm having a hard time getting my hands around, to be quite frank with you, is this. I don't understand why you can't put this right in the middle of the back, come the back.
I'll explain that too. So my whole vision when we moved into the house was gonna be, my daughter would have her huge playset, like a Amish-built, nice sturdy playset with all swings and stuff so as she grows up, she can use that freely as she wants. I was gonna landscape it out with two by sixes, pressure treated two by sixes, make a big, basically a rectangle landscaped out, starting at the left side of the lot. Well, actually, starting at the right side of the lot, looking from the back. It would be a, basically, her little landscaping site right there. There's four concrete cinder blocks in the ground from a previous shed, I'm assuming, that I tried getting out. I actually gave myself a golfer's elbow smashing with a sledgehammer for like three hours and I shipped like this much off and I was like, you know what, I'm not, I'm leaving that there. So every time I actually mow my lawn there, I hit the mower. So I pull my mower deck up, pull my mower deck down. That's a main reason, that's right on the other side of the lot, towards the fence of my neighbor's house.
Okay.
So I was gonna landscape that all with play mulch and everything. Put the swing set down, which is roughly like twenty feet long, give or take. I mean, it could be about eighteen feet long. And then on the other side of that, which basically would put the shed right there. So that when the playground was in, where the two by six would end, basically would be where the shed would be without a variance. So that would create like a hazard, in my mind at least, because I wouldn't want my daughter to like run over there and run into it or anyone to get hurt because the shed's right there. So that's why I want it as close to the other side as possible. And I didn't wanna really have to create a ten foot variance from the yard because then I'd have to mow there and I have a really big problem growing grass as it is and that's all dirt right now. Well, it's like weed, leaves and weeds and dirt. So I like weed whacked it on and everything, so now it's all just dirt. And since the runoff, it wouldn't make much sense for me to do grass back there because I can't really mow back there. There's rocks and like, there's like, there's actually a rock wall back there at one time and stakes in the ground, metal stakes. And I've actually torn it all out to the point where I can't, but there's still rocks all in the ground because there's a rock wall foundation. I don't know if they're trying to do it for drainage or what, or they had a nice rock wall there at one time, but it's all overgrown and it's just a mess. So I can't grow grass back there without, like, that's why I mulch it. So I was hoping to mulch that side, mulch all behind it, bring it back up, mulch where I can and then there'll be like a gap for a sandbox.
So then you're referring to all this area in the back of the...
Yeah, it was, it was all overgrown. There was a fence with like nine metal green stakes, whatever they're called. There are, there are picket fence around there with a metal grade fence. There was all embedded in the stone. So I like, I spent hours and hours back there trying to make it like workable space, but with the tree line and everything, it's just, there's nothing that we can do because there's not even enough like, there's like a picnic table back there. That's basically it right now.
Enclosure to the existing house, is that something that you've thought about?
I have thought about it. It's just, there's, the way with our backyard and how it's like set up, there's no like nice spot for it in a sense, back in the corner. It's almost behind the trees because the trees overgrow. So it'd be like almost covered in like halfway with trees in the sense, in the summertime when it overgrows. And it's tucked away. It's not intrusive to anything. It's like, it's back there. We can store everything in the back and not have to worry about an actual lawn and like mowing around it. Like I said, I would mulch around there because I get the mulch from the, from the town every year. So I would just mulch around and make it look nice and then maybe put a couple landscaping bricks around it to make it look like a landscaped yard. So that's my plan.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
I have another question and that's more of a concern and I'm not sure. Village Code allows one hundred square feet for an accessory structure which a wood shed is defined as. We started at one eighty, we went to one ninety-two. That's darn near double what the current code allows for.
Right.
That makes it pretty significant in my mind.
Exactly.
That's big.
Yeah, it is big.
Is there any thought in your mind or possibilities of removing it backwards from the hundred and ninety-two square feet? I'll tell you what I thought when I looked at it first, is I said, a garage in their backyard? And that's because it, it looks like a garage.
Right.
And one of the other things that I have trouble with and I, you know, this is just for your information, tell you what I'm struggling with is I can't possibly envision all the different things and uses that people, and not necessarily yourself, but when we grant a variance, the variance goes with the property. Uses that other folks will find for that or other uses that I couldn't imagine. And this board has had some experiences with one where we thought something was gonna be one way. Turned out being used for something totally different.
Absolutely.
And didn't work out. So that's what I'm struggling with. So tell me about why we need two hundred square feet on most. So as a father of six children, I understand toys. I really do.
Yeah.
Tell me about two hundred square feet.
So basically, when we moved in this house initially, I was in college. I actually wanted to finish college and get a degree and go on to be a computer hardware engineer. And when we found out we had my daughter, I was kinda like, okay, I'm gonna stand still now. Finished my semester, I started working two jobs. Never in a hundred years did I think I would own a house, yet alone have a daughter. So now that I'm in the position where I have a beautiful house, the nicest neighborhood I could possibly imagine, it reminds me of when I was growing up. There's a park right across the street. It accumu, it accumu, it's just everything like, when we first walked in the house, I was like, so. The brother looked at me and I was like, so, where do we, she's like, you haven't even looked at the house yet. I'm like, it feels like home. I've looked at three houses. This feels like home. She's like, alright, well, let me take you, let me walk you around. I'm like, I'm sold. She's like, really? I was like, yes. We walked around the house, we went and did the paperwork, put in an offer and same day. And it's just like, ever since then, it's just, our lives have been getting better and better and better. I'm not gonna lie to you. She does an in-home daycare, a licensed in-home daycare.
It's registered?
Yeah, it's registered and everything. She goes to the state. That's a part of the reason we have a whole bunch more toys than we should have. And those all get stored in there as well. And I don't see us outgrowing a shed, a twelve by sixteen shed, because with the, with the garage where it is now. If that's a new bedroom with a big, a nice closet in there or something, somewhere along the lines of that, depending on what we exactly, how we structure it out, I don't see us outgrowing a house ever. I mean, even if we had another one, we can make out another bedroom out of the house. Because it's technically, you can make it a three bedroom, but if the one bedroom's really, really small, I'm sure you're aware of the houses in the village, they're all in the same structure. That one bedroom is really, really small. You can make that a bedroom, but I prefer not to if we don't have to. So if we do the garage, that gives us expansion if we need to in the future too. So having that being, being said, everything, power tools that I'm accumulating, like all this stuff, I don't see us outgrowing a twelve by sixteen shed. I see it growing with it versus the house we already grew out of. So I don't want it to be like where we have to consider buying another house ever. I want this to be my forever home if possible, especially if we get the variances that we need and the space that we need to grow as a family. She's talking about having another one. She's only like ten or twelve weeks pregnant right now. She's talking about having another one, maybe in the future. I'm talking about, I don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow. So I mean, it's possible we may have three.
We have no jurisdiction over that.
I know, exactly. So if, you know, we're, we're gonna be at two. Like I said, it's room for expansion and I don't see us outgrowing it. I don't see a reason to move. I don't see a reason to look in the market. The market's ridiculous right now, but like, for what we got the house for and everything, I see me long-term retiring, growing older.
You answered the question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I think so.
So the final question would be, are you gonna keep the garage door out?
Uh, the garage?
No, no, the shed.
I was hoping so. I was hoping, because I actually talked to the guy and he said at the end of the season, he'll sell me that exact shed or they can have it built or have it delivered. He said within four to six weeks. So depending on how that all works out, they have to come inspect it and make sure it fits where it has to go and there's the variance they need. So I already measured everything out. I'm all good to go and all that. They just have to have it inspected, come out two different times. I was hoping to have it built with the garage door, just because it would make it easier.
How do you feel about a restriction or a condition on the variance that says no electricity?
How do I feel about it?
You said you're building it without electricity.
Yeah, definitely. I never saw myself putting electricity in it. People have thrown ideas in my head. I wouldn't be against no electricity, I guess.
Okay.
I just want some sort of light, I guess I could do battery operated lights, like in case I got...
No, no, I'm just, yeah.
Like a headlamp or something if I gotta go out at night, you know what I mean?
Not talking about that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see myself putting electricity in it.
We keep it in the shed range if we keep the electricity out of it.
Yeah, that's fine. Because theoretically speaking, we put a drainage in our backyard last year to avoid having a completely saturated backyard. So we put a drainage system in, in Toronto, electricity around and all that. It would probably give me more stress than I need, so.
Glad it could help.
I really, I don't need electricity in there, so.
Alright, I have no questions.
Is there a basement in the house?
Most of them don't have it.
Well, I know, I just wonder.
Five.
Five, you know that.
And I saw a neighbor and I talked to one of them and she's like Swedish Angeles. She's lived there for like forty years or something. She's one of the first people to move in.
Yeah.
So.
Bedrock is very high over there.
It's a lot, yeah.
I have no other questions.
I don't have any.
Okay, we will close this portion. What I'm gonna do is offer an opportunity for the general public to speak for or against this as they see fit. No questions. Alright, then we'll close that portion. We have an open discussion here within the board. I don't have any questions. I think we've done it pretty much in open.
I just do have one more question. So you've talked to all your neighbors?
I talked to the ones that I could. I talked to, as I explained it on at the planning board meeting, that's why I handed over the paper to the application on the last day that I possibly couldn't order to have the next board meeting, just because I was going to my neighbor's houses. I went to one of them seven times and I left them a note on their front door and they just...
Right.
Didn't, like my phone number, my name, and they just didn't respond. I knew they were home like four of the times, but I didn't want to like knock there for ten minutes. So I knocked for like a minute and waited.
So would they understand what you're asking for, that, you know, you said originally the ten by eighteen shed and all that and stuff?
Yeah, I told them I was gonna try to get as big of a shed as I could. And they were like, oh yeah, I know, we all need them. I mean, there's not much space once you start. And I was like, and we're renovating the garage. And then one guy was like, oh man, you're not in the garage, you're losing all your space. I was like, I'm losing all my space I had in the house. Now I have no space, except for the budget.
Will, did we post a sign?
No, we did not.
Is it because it wouldn't go in the ground?
No. I was, uh...
I'm just looking at the low number of neighbors that he was able to get to sign, even though it sounds like he made a great effort to do so. Um, you know, a sign out front would have at least given that public notice in addition to what's in the paper.
Yeah, I had that pre-intention of doing it, but I ended up working for both the village and the town and I completely forgot about it.
As taxpayer of both, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I know, sorry, same.
These are all your surrounding neighbors, right?
Yeah, those, those are the four that are actually like touching my yard. Then there's one pretty corner that, there's like a greenhouse and they're like, you know, they're really excluded people. They just keep themselves and I just, they never, I knocked for like, I still like seven times. I just felt like the last time, I was like, alright, I can't go there.
I'm gonna call the cops on you.
Yeah, like, they got a clipboard and a pad. They probably think I'm a salesman, like get off their property, so.
Okay, as long as Mr. Baker's not here, did anyone refuse to sign or say no, they would not sign your petition?
No.
Okay. So we're still closed?
Yep.
Alright. If no one has any further comments or questions, we have a couple of things to do here. Will, did the planning board determine themselves to be the lead agent? They did not. Okay, and we would need first a motion that this is a type two, no significant impact, and that we're, the sailing board is the lead agency.
The zoning board.
That's us.
Yes. Is it a seeker?
Yeah, that's a seeker process.
Um, I make a motion that we, that this is a type two seeker, um, property and that...
Application?
Application and that we will take responsibility for that.
Okay, we're the lead agency.
We're the lead agency.
Okay, by Larry, second on that?
I'll second.
Very good, Michael. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Got that part done. Now what we need is, we need, the way I'm seeing it, at least two variances. You could roll them into three. You can do them any way you want. You need one. You need a size variance of ninety-two square feet to allow for a twelve by sixty, if you so desire, to allow for the hundred and ninety-two square foot accessory structure. Then you can roll both of them for the setback variances, the side yard and the rear, into one if you would like or do them separately. We need two, two feet on the side yard setback and I think we said, I wrote down four. Well, eight, you're right. Eight, the eight feet variance and then I wrote down six on the rear yard. That would give them two feet off the, or four feet off the property line. If we need more, you know, or less. Will, you're looking puzzled.
So, oh no, I'm not, is this what puzzled looks like?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I don't get to look at myself very often.
You're the one who's probably been closest there. It's tough to read from the survey that we have.
Yeah, and it's not to scale, obviously, the size of the shed on here. And it's hard to say. That fence that you say is in the rear there, that shows on your, your survey?
Yeah.
Obviously, it's, what is this, uh? Four point three feet from the property line.
Well, that's at that one corner.
At that corner, yeah. I would say it's two.
Gets a little closer.
Yeah, it's not great.
Yeah, because I don't own any of the trees in my backyard. There's like seven trees, I think. I don't own any of them. They're all on the other side of the property line. Which, I don't know how big a tree branch or a tree stump is in the base of it. So I mean, that's, none of that might, so I don't know how far more it is in line.
Well, this, if you look at the corner of the chain link fence, the furthest corner to...
Yeah.
Let's see, you're on that side, right? So it would be to the north. That's probably only a foot or two off of the property line.
Chain link's on the property line?
Nope.
Is it? Not?
Not according to this.
Really?
No, it looks like it goes diagonally away from the property line.
Yeah.
Oh, so nice.
Yeah, it's from the corner of that chain link fence, it's probably a foot or two to your property line.
Oh, okay.
So with that in mind and your little, your dip that you're talking about to find your level, how far do you think? Can you guesstimate?
It would be like probably six feet from there, from the, from the corner diagonally.
Well, say, say from, well, let's, let's make it easy. From the corner of that fence, how far would you think you'd be putting the, the shed back?
I'd say probably eight feet.
Okay, so let me, let me go this way. If we gave, if we provided a six foot variance, that would mean you would be, the closest you could get to that fence would be about five feet.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And you don't have to use the entire variance. I mean...
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. I just don't wanna be like stumped where like I need to go back a foot, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So like, it's gonna be at least, at least six feet from the chain link.
So if someone up the board said six feet is the variance to the side yard or to the backyard, rear yard setback, that means you could get within four feet of the property line or five feet of the fence if our approximations are right. Does that put you in the right neighborhood or?
Think it does, but I've never actually, that's the thing. I've never, I never realized how much I went back until like I started digging up back there and I was like, why is this like huge gap in between the fence and the fence that they had up, which was just that space, which was property back there? So to answer your question, I think a two foot setback from the back and the front, but I don't think I'll actually use the two foot, but if I do, I have it. You know what I mean? So is that two, it'd be three feet from the fence?
What is it, John?
One point nine feet.
One point nine feet?
Yeah. I can see it now, the circle. I got my own finger.
Alright.
So it's one point nine feet from that corner to the property line. So almost two feet.
Okay.
That should be good, I think.
Well, that would just...
More than that, yeah.
Yeah. So if we granted Will eight feet, you're, you're the one who's been closest to the property. Let's make this easy. If we grant an eight feet side yard, eight foot side yard, eight foot rear yard setback, he doesn't have to get two feet from the property line. He can only go three or four then. I don't have to come back here and say, oh my goodness, I cut it too short.
Right, that's...
But wait, the way you just phrased that, an eight foot setback means it's gotta be eight feet off the property line.
No, I think four variance.
An eight foot variance, excuse me, how's that? That's two feet off the property line.
Right. But I, I think you should phrase it in terms of the setback. That's what the code says. It shall be near the property line then ten feet. I don't want him to be confused. If you tell him, we're gonna grant you an eight foot variance, then what does that really mean? Tell him how far off the property line he can put it. Well, he has to go ten now.
Hold on. It can go two feet to either one, side yard or rear yard.
So that would be a two foot setback, yes, two foot.
That's not the way we've typically, that's not the way we've typically done it. We've typically gone with a variance of eight feet from the requirement, but if...
Well, that, okay, assuming that, assuming it's, I know what they're requiring, but...
Okay.
I just think it's common sense.
If it's easier, there's no problem.
Well, the area variance be...
Would it be two feet or eight feet?
The variance would be eight feet.
Yeah, that's what they're saying. But for the applicant's understanding, that means you can be two feet from both property lines.
Okay, so, done. Done. So that we are looking for, if you choose to approve this or move it forward, two variances. Number one, ninety-two square foot area variance. Number one, ninety-two square foot area variance on the size of the shed, because it can go to one hundred and ninety-two square feet then. And two feet from each, both the side yard and the, the backyard is how close you can go, setback of two feet. And you don't have, side and back, and you don't have to use all of it.
Correct.
If I wanna put it three feet, that's okay too, if they choose to do, sorry. So what we're looking for now is those two motions.
Make a motion to grant a two-foot side. And rear setback.
Very good.
You wanna combine with this?
No, we're gonna do, do this, do this one at a time, so we've got a, we've got a setback variance of two feet from the property line, which the applicant can place this.
I second.
Seconded by Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?
Aye, I'm gonna oppose that.
Okay, very good, Larry opposed, three to one. Okay, now we need another one, if we choose to grant it.
I'll make a motion to approve a ninety-two square foot uh area variance. Size, with the condition that no electric be allowed.
Okay, we have that on the table, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Alright, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unopposed, Larry, very good, so that motion passes three to one also.
Thank you very much, you guys are-
Thank you very much. You guys have a good night. Good luck with everything you got going on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much for your support.
Sure.
Very well, yeah, we'll be seeing you. Don't forget to get your permit.
I have a question about the uh-
Corner of his yard, it's like, so it's not gonna look like that.
I didn't go all the way over and look at it.
Who you might.
Yeah, just wanna see the-
Who you might.
It is pretty deep back.
Okay.
Yes.
Very deep.
Screaming through a shed, yeah. They, they hear them screaming.
In the village? But you, the trees in the house.
Well, but I also need-
That kind of waves in my mind.
Thank you very much, appreciate it guys.
Take your luck, sir.
Thank you so much.
Alright, Will, while we're still on the record, any, um, anything coming up next month, thank you.
No, no, okay.
So nothing in July?
No.
Alright.
I thought, I thought you said something about a picnic or cook out of your house.
No, I said I would bring the beer to your house.
Oh, was it?
I did say that.
Alright, just you and me.
Alright, so we've got that, any training opportunities that are coming up?
Um, you can still do the online ones, but I have not heard of any other.
I would encourage everybody to get in at least a couple of hours, cause I know that we're all good for the four of these.
This year, yeah.
This year and carryovers into next year, but if you get an opportunity and so on and so forth.
For a C E.
Um, I have one other item to bring up, you're gonna love it, you and I have talked about it, Will. What's the process where we would make recommendations, where we see a need to the village trustees and say we ought to consider changing the code? What's the process?
Email to the mayor. I mean, uh basically, it's just getting something on the agenda.
Okay.
And so what I would suggest is you have the code, or we could do it, uh Joe and I have done it before. You make a suggestion, we'll put it in the code and highlight where it's gonna go in the code and what the changes are, and then we'll-
Gives that an opportunity to see where it could put the impact and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
Okay, and last question, did you get a chance to check on the driveway?
I did, yeah, I, I think it was out of plans, so.
But it's still too wide.
Well, of course, it's wide, yeah, but I mean, it's a two-car garage, a little extra spot, so they could put their trailer or boat.
They can't bring that spot out to the road.
No, well, you got-
It's stoned all the way, it looks like a three-lane highway.
Thirty-six feet.
It's thirty-six up.
No, that's what you're allowed.
Who's, thirty-six feet, you're not at the road.
No, 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 the length from the, I thought you meant-
No, I'm talking about the width.
Oh, no.
It looks like it's coming right straight out to the road.
Alright, I'll go talk to them, see what's going on with it.
I mean, it's, in essence, it is stoned and it's functioning as a driveway right now.
Yeah, okay, but I thought they had it on the plans, but.
Even if they did, it's outside the code at the road, road only allows for twenty-four feet, right?
Nope. You can do it one of two ways, um so say for instance, the code says you have a, you know, single-car garage, and you wanna add another stall there for a driveway. It says it has to be, it can be twelve feet by thirty-six feet, it doesn't say it has to cut in or anything like that, no.
Okay, so no.
At thirty-six, where it cuts in, it doesn't say it can't be at the road, or it has to be at the garage, you know what I'm saying?
So when you have a two-car garage, what's appropriate?
That's a good question, that's what I gotta look at, and I can't remember if it was approved, and is it a driveway like that, or if they're just thinking, they don't have to have a permit, it's fine, they can do whatever they want, so I gotta go there and get something.
Please.
Yep.
Alright, because that's the change in the code, is that, you know, if you take a look, most places say, and I did take a look on this one.
Yeah.
You don't go outside the boundaries of the garage.
Right, but ours doesn't have that.
I did look for ours, and it does not have-
It does say that you have to be at least three feet from the property line.
Okay, why doesn't, I went quickly there.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, I'll send an email to Darryl, we have nothing in July, does anybody wanna stay and have more conversation for another forty-five minutes? Alright, then what I need is a motion to close this up.
I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Larry, make some motion.
I tell they have a motion.
Seconded by Mr. Fantuso, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, let's go, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you say about thirty-six feet, that's the length?
No, the code doesn't say, the code doesn't say twenty-four feet at the road, it just says twelve feet for each garage up to thirty-six feet, and it doesn't say it has to taper anywhere or anything like that.
Okay, so then in my, in my mind, a max would be twenty-four feet.
For a two-car?
For a two-car garage?
It says twelve feet wide for each garage stall, up to a total of thirty-six feet.
Right, but I would have to stop at twenty-four if I only had a two-car garage.
Thirty-six is their garage.
Thirty-six is there if you have a three-car garage, I guess, which are very popular right now, by the way. I want one, but. So the code would then say it needs to be twenty-four, they're interpreting to mean that it's twenty-four feet. It wasn't clear, I'm glad you're reading.
A lot of people, they have like a little extra turnaround parking area that sticks out wider than their garage.
Agreed.
You know, so I-
Little turnaround, sometimes they even have them coming off onto the side where they park a trailer or something.
Right.
But this one runs the length of the driveway.
I'm just saying, if you propose, make a proposal that it's gotta be twenty-four, you know, no-
It shouldn't be outside the boundaries of the garage limitation.
They're asking for a lot of variances, you'll have a lot of non-conforming uses probably we have in the village, which are creating.
Yeah, but in the absence of that, how do we, you know, okay, so I can, I get that, but in the absence of-
Well, the particular one you're talking about now, I think you're probably right, that they get twenty-four feet. If it's two cars, if they're gonna build an extra, a three-car garage, they get thirty-six feet.
Nah, there's not enough space. Just curious on how that would work, you know, and it, cause otherwise, in the absence of changing the code, well, we don't have to, if the, if that interpretation is correct, it can go to twenty-four, or thirty-six, if you had a three-car garage.
Right.
I'm good.
Does the code say three-car garage in width, or just three-car garage, I could go-
So if it doesn't say three-car garage, it just says-
Just says twelve per stall up to a total of thirty-six.
Per garage.
I could put a stall on the back and put the driveway in the front.
Well, you could interpret, there's different ways of interpreting that stall, yeah, what does that mean? I mean, it's not, people, most people would say side by side, but it could be behind you.
I have a cousin who has a three-car garage and the third door is out the back.
Yeah, yeah, it's not unusual.
Drive through the garage.
Gonna be on vacation?
Yeah.
Oh, nice area to go in the summer, whereabouts?
Uh, you can go out here where Nifon Lake is, it goes up ninety-three.
I know where that is.
Yes, father-in-law's a camper up on one of the sides.
Nifon Lake is on the other side.
So, yeah.
Michael, you don't stay for this, huh?